Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. And can we have the roll call, please, and then we'll do the pledge?
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskin?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Present.
Ms. Menzer?
Here.
Mr. Brant?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. Well, I just made a bunch of new friends in the back of the room, and they've reduced the average age in this room dramatically. They, some of them at least, have agreed to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you want to come up front, I'm going to come down there, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance together, okay? Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice, law.
Great job!
Tammy, do you want to come forward? Whoever wants to come forward, please come and stand with us while we read the proclamation. So we have a proclamation that we were requested to present this evening. This is for the Week of the Young Child. Okay, are you ready? Whereas the Iowa Association for the Education of Young Children and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 5th through 11th, 2025. And whereas by highlighting the need for high-quality early care and education for all children and families within our community and the state, we support the commitment of these groups to the early care and education system in Iowa and the work to ensure each and every child, beginning at birth, is healthy and successful. And whereas based on the latest research on brain development and how children learn and what is known about the return on investment in young children, the City of Marion recognizes the need for access to high-quality early care and educational services. And whereas the future of our community and the economy of our state depend on the quality of the early care and education experiences, as well as access to the high-quality early care and education programs provided to young children today. And whereas the City of Marion recognizes the vital work performed by early care and education professionals and expresses gratitude for their important services in support of children and their families, now therefore I, Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 5th through 11th, 2025, as Week of the Young Child in the City of Marion. There we go.
Using your best smiles.
Hold up your proclamation.
Oh, I forgot. Sorry.
I love the thumbs up. You're going to be moved.
Want to say something?
No, I just want to say thank you. Oh, oh, sorry. I just want to say thank you for letting us be present at this meeting tonight. Early education is so important in our communities, and we're bringing as much awareness as we can for all to see all the great things we're doing. So if you want to follow our center, it's called The Early Edge, and see all the neat things we're doing next week. We have lots of special activities, but there's going to be lots of activities at all the childcare centers around the city and the surrounding area. So just a special week. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. We have another proclamation this evening for Fair Housing Month, and we have several members of our Civil Rights Committee here to accept it, right?
Yeah, you guys are welcome to come up.
Oh. Alicia, do you want to make the introduction? Hold on, hold on. Alicia's going to speak first.
Oh, sorry. Here, speak first.
I will introduce our Chair, Renee Forsyth-Christie, and our Vice Chair, Katie Tanner.
I see. Thank you. Whereas April 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Act sought to open doors of opportunity and eliminate discrimination in housing into affirmatively further fair housing, and as we celebrate the 57th anniversary of this historic legislation, we reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that everyone has equal and fair access to housing. And whereas fair housing assures individuals have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on age, color, creed, familial status, gender identity, marital status, disability, national origin, disability a second time, race, religion, source of income, sex and/or sexual orientation. And whereas in Marion, we want to be recognized as an open and inclusive community that is committed to providing fair housing and advocating for equal housing opportunity for all residents and prospective residents of Marion. And whereas Marion's elected officials encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities and support the goal of fair housing for all people. Now therefore, I, Aje Miskin, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month and encourage the residents of our community and communities across the country to support fair housing. Say anything?
I do. Not only is the Chair of the Marion Civil Rights Commission, I'm also accepting on behalf of the Cedar Rapids Area Association of Realtors, this April and every April, Realtors recognize Fair Housing Month to commemorate the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. It honors the principle that in the United States of America, no one should be denied housing because of who they are.
Thank you so much.
Renee, hold on. Hold on.
I'm going to do this for the board.
What side? What's your good side?
I don't have one.
I'll do.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And Renee, I guess you might as well stay standing. We have our first presentation from the Marion Civil Rights Commission, and we'll have Alicia.
You'll need to...
Please, go ahead.
To give the annual presentation for the Civil Rights Commission is our Chair, Renee Forsyth-Christie. Katie Tanner, Vice Chair, is also here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Renee Forsyth-Christie, Chair for the Marion Civil Rights Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to update the City Council on the status of the commission. I was last able to share the commission updates with the council this past August. Since that time, we have welcomed three new commissioners. We are at full strength of nine commissioners and excited to get to work on our strategic plan and our newly adopted outreach plan. Last year, we took the time to intentionally review our strategic plan and how the commission can serve the community. That led to the creation and adoption of the outreach plan focusing on education and data collection in different ways than we have in the past. Data collection on minority-owned businesses is a large project we plan to launch this year. Inspired by community feedback, a work group has been formed to start defining scope and parameters for this project. We also want to continue to deepen and strengthen our relationship with the Marion Public Library. Our materials are included in their book displays as appropriate. In regard to attending events, our focus has shifted to supporting local events such as city showcase and celebrating pride in Marion. We will make efforts to attend events hosted in Marion or that directly serve the Marion population. In part, the reason for this shift in focus on Marion events is to be more intentional in educating the Marion public about their civil rights and being a resource to those with questions. To this end, we are working to host and outreach events in partnership with various organizations, defining what a hate crime is and what to do if you are a victim or a witness to one. We are striving to increase the depth and breadth of our communications. A work group has been tasked with creating a communication toolbox that will allow commissioners to be better prepared to represent the commission and the community. It is also our goal to decrease the time it takes for the commission to respond to incidents and queries. Thank you again for your time. We are excited by the work being done by our group and look forward to updating the City Council on our progress next year.
Thank you. If you would stay there for a minute, see if we have any questions for you from council? Go ahead.
Not a question. I guess I'm really glad to hear your comment that one of your main focus for this year is going to be higher visibility and participation in local events. I think that's going to be education in itself for the community. So I applaud that change and focus.
Anyone else? Thank you for your leadership on the commission, and we look forward to seeing the progress continue. I know this commission has been improving on itself year after year since its founding about 10 or 11 years ago, and it's good to see progress being made. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is an update for the Neighborhood Park Master Plan.
Good evening, council. Today, we have RDG, Scott from RDG. He's going to give an update to the Neighborhood Park Master Plan. This is a, we have him in town for a few steering committee meetings, along with an open house later, and so we felt it was time to be able to give just an update as far as the progress for this project.
Thank you, Seth. As you mentioned, my name is Scott Crawford. I'm with RDG, Planning and Design, and leading our team on the three Neighborhood Park Master Plans that we've been working with Seth and his team and the community on. We started on him back in November and had our first public open house in December. Tonight, the intent is just to give you a brief update on where we're at in that process and share with you the steps that we have going forward. This is the kind of the core team that's been working on the project from the city, our organization, as well as Mitch Christensen here with Anderson Bogart. Where we started was with inventory analysis and initial goal setting, working through that with the city technical committee, the steering committee, and eventually engaging the larger community in the first public open house that we facilitated. And where we're at today, working through the concepts, is we're met with the technical committee earlier this afternoon, the steering committee just before this, and as Seth mentioned, we have our second public open house later tonight at the Art and Environmental Center to get additional feedback on the information that we're going to share with you tonight from the public at large. We've also engaged online through social pinpoint. There's been a fair amount of feedback we got following the first open house, and we intend to launch that same platform with updated information tomorrow morning after the public open house tonight. Going forward, then, we'll take comments that we received today during our meetings, the comments that we received back from the public this evening, as well as through the online tool over the next two weeks, and refine that into the final concept and start working through the implementation approach with Seth and his team for each of the three parks to then bring back to this council in June.
You might want to speak up. There's some people in the public, so.
To give context, the three parks that are a part of this particular process are what we've called the Lucor Property Park on the north side of town, the Waterland Park on the west side, or excuse me, on the east side, and then the existing Willow Park renovations that will take place following the Auburnette Road extension project through that site. So we'll start with the Lucor Park property. We started with an initial analysis of the property. There is quite a bit of topography. There is a relatively high point, one of the higher points in the region that exists on that park. There's also a lot of historic context to this property as a longtime operating dairy farm and agricultural operation, and there are several structures that have remained on the property, the large vertical water silo, as well as the large vertical corn crib that are proposed to remain in place and be repurposed as part of the park plan. Also, future plans for the water department to have a water tower located on this park property on the northwest corner of the property that have been integrated into the park plan. So this is the current concept that is being vetted with the public tonight at the public open house. It includes, as you can see, a pretty comprehensive trail system that provides about, there's a half-mile loop and a quarter-mile loop that people can do on the circuit. It includes parking access on the northwest corner. It's shared access with the future maintenance facility, as well as with the future water tower that would be located on that side of the park. Also includes...
Sorry, that's the water tower location, too, that you'll see. So I know that was a little hard to see, so just wanted to point that out.
Eight pickleball courts, open-air shelters, restrooms, play space, and then the repurposed... Oops, advancing. The repurposed corn crib in this location, and then the maintained water silo in this location. One of the other elements of this park is to actually provide some level of acknowledgement of the previous footing foundations here and here of the two large dairy production barns, and through some interpretive elements that would be placed in the ground in those locations. And the other item to note is that there is a fair amount of topography on the front end of the park as you come up from Lucor Road into the park, and so that's proposed to all be in native plantings, as are the edges of the park. And then there would be a large great lawn area for multipurpose use on the interior of that trail system. These are some of the character images that have been developed, and as far as the elements that would be included within that park as well. Transitioning to the Waterland property, this is the second park that we'll review. This is an area that has been developed to the west with the existing neighborhood. The overlays that are shown here are a compilation of your current comprehensive plan, the more detailed overlay plan, the sub-area plan that has been developed, and the more recent preliminary plat to the south of the park property here that has been developed. And the purpose of that is to show the location of this particular park site, the nine acres, or 11 total acres, but about eight acres for park development, and the future elementary school to the north, and then the adjacent neighborhood to the south for the purposes of showing the opportunity to connect in a trail and greenway through this neighborhood down to a potential future regional retention or detention stormwater feature to accommodate some of the stormwater management needs for a much larger area of development. Talk about that more here in a minute, but this shows a bit more enlargement area of that adjacency and shared use with the school, anticipating and in meeting with the school that they will need some of the traditional things that have come along with elementary school with bus drop-off, dedicated parent drop-off, outdoor play space. And what we're looking to do is try and not duplicate any of that within the park site, but actually help complement that with some of the things that are going to be developed on the city's park property. And in doing that, we've also looked at how that could tie into the connection between the school and that larger greenway, both for access for children and families coming to the school, but also as a recreational amenity. And so in looking at that, as we started to analyze how some of the future land use of this neighborhood with front porch-facing development with rear-loaded out to the park, trying to draw upon how we could pull some of those greenway elements up through the park in that way to actually create more of a network of green than just a singular park. And so in the park concept, everything kind of on this east side is proposed to be a native restored reconstructed prairie plantings. These particular dashed items here, one is the existing well that's already been installed, and the other is the anticipated future water infrastructure that would be located on that portion of the park. And so the major organizing element of the park here is this park drive that would come in from this location around the park and down to the south and connect back in with Mullion Way, and that's intended to provide daily access for the park, but also potential future opportunities for parent drop-off for the adjacent elementary school. And in doing that, we've also provided off-street parking here for the park in these two different locations. There's a play feature in the middle, open-air shelter, restroom, proposed a small splash or spray feature here for children to use or activate, and then a shared-use basketball futsal court in this location, another open-air shelter, and then these areas would be more maintained, turf grass, lawn for multipurpose use, pickup games, small youth program practices and training sessions and such. We are also knowing that this existing neighborhood is developed over here to the west, planning to berm and buffer this west edge of the park over here as well. And these are some of the character images for that particular park as well. And then the third park, Willow Park, the need to remaster plan this park with the future development extension of Auburnette Road through here, which this analysis diagram shows where, right where that road comes in, across the creek, and then comes down through the park and connects in. And so the need to remaster plan, because the majority, if not all, of the park will be impacted by that road construction, working around that as kind of a future existing condition was the baseline for the master plan of Willow Park. And the major organizing element here was that we were going to kind of identify, based on feedback from the committee and the public, have more of the passive recreation on the west side of the road with the trails and open space over here, and have more of the active recreation on the east side of the road with a shared futsal basketball court, playground area, open-air shelter, restroom. And one of the more unique elements to this park is there's a large storm sewer outlet here that captures quite a bit of the water coming up from this area of the neighborhood down here in daylights before it actually gets down to the creek, and so we're proposing a reconstructed wetland that that water would come through before entering into the creek that could be used as a recreational amenity with a wetland overlook here, potentially an elevated wetland boardwalk that might traverse over the wetland through here. And then in the trail network, we're also showing that connection back underneath as an underpass under the future bridge for the road with access at the park level under the bridge over to this west side of the park here in the park loop that comes around through here. We're also proposing a future trail connection across the creek to the Indian Creek Trail in this location here. There will be, as part of the roadway project, there's on-street trails that follow both sides of the road, so there is access down from the bridge into the park. There is a user-activated crosswalk signal here in this location for an at-grade crossing that also provides another connection from the east to the west side of the park. And we do, actually, in this park, are showing off-street parking in this area here that is accessed from the south side of the park with a through access both for circulation and emergency access up to the court and the building. And those are some of the, one of the elements that I failed to mention as well on this one, we are proposing a small beginner-level pump track as part of this park as well, here on the, kind of on the east side of the park. And that is kind of the collection of character images that have been developed up to this point. One of the items that we are still evaluating related to this particular park is access and/or engagement with the creek from the park, and we're continuing to work through with Seth and the parallel Indian Creek team on that one as well. And so to summarize, then, the next steps would be where we will take the feedback we received earlier today, as well as what we will receive from the public tonight and over the next two weeks with the online engagement tool, and refine that into a primary master plan for each park, and then begin to develop both the phasing strategy, as well as the anticipated cost for the implementation of each one of the master plans, and then bring all that information back to the council for review and approval in June.
Any questions?
Questions? Go ahead, Grant.
If we can cycle back to the diagram showing Lucor. Sorry to have you do that. Okay, so the location of the water tower, can that again be highlighted? Sorry. Okay, okay, thank you. So my guess is the location of the water tower has to be very close to where the well is sunk?
So there is no well?
There's no well?
There is no well on this side, yep.
Okay, so that then eliminates a constraint that I falsely thought existed. Is there any way that either the trail placement or the water tower placement, they can be separated? It just seems to, I guess what I'm going toward is, do we have kind of a structural visibility conflict with proximity to the trail? I don't know if that's a big deal or not. I think what I'm suggesting is to introduce that as a point of consideration.
Yeah, and I would tell you, too, we're going to have some elevation, too, with these two structures, the corn crib and the silo that will, pretty closely, and in some of the early discussions with the steering committee, and I'm sure we'll hear from the open house, too, is this drive will likely want to look at hard surfacing and maybe taking advantage of this one here and then of the parking lot, too. So there's still some, this is all still draft form, so these are comments that we hope to get. We'll take that into consideration, but we hope to get some more during the open house, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got two questions. The one, unless I missed it, I did not see any ballfields on any of these three parks, whether it's a baseball field, soccer field. You've got a lot of green space, but I don't see any design of ballfields. Did I miss it, or is that by design?
You did, and really from the open houses, we really weren't hearing the ballfield uses, specifically the ones, the one at Willow, a lot of the concerns that we get are obviously access of Eighth Street, and then because of its existing use, it's not a very desirable field. It's very, besides the infield, you get to the outfield, it's very hilly. It's old landfill, and so it's settled over time. So we haven't heard it from the open houses. I'll be curious tonight at this open house, also from the social pinpoint, since we did not show it, if we will hear about the ballfields, and so.
Well, has there been an outreach? I don't know who's attended the meetings, but has there been an outreach to all of the teams, and do they have enough areas to practice? I mean, I know there's a shortage of courts for basketball, but I don't know exactly how we stand. You'd know better than I would. So I'm assuming, based on the fact you'd have none designed in there, there is not a need for it.
There, I would say there's always a need for it, but that was also one thing we wanted, we put into the comp plan to take a look at our athletic fields and to do a study for that. But listening to the neighborhoods, there wasn't a huge need. I'm sure if there is, we're going to hear something tonight about that field. But that's always going to be something we'll look at as far as additional needs for some of our other spaces, too.
See, I don't see that as much of a neighborhood need as it is a citywide need, in that you've got the green space, the ability to accommodate it. So I'm sure you'll look at that. The other question I have, so we're talking three parks here, two non-existent, one somewhat existent, needing a lot of modifications. So I'm sure you don't have a timeline or anything else, but as you start talking about going forward with these three parks, how are you going to prioritize which happens in which order?
Yeah, so that's going to be part of the, some of the next meetings that we'll have. We're going to be discussing phasing priorities, and I'll use Lucor as a great example because Lucor is, we know that there's not development that's happening around... We know that there's not uh development that's happening around in there. However, there is a lot of prairie being planted, uh and that's something that's. Easily can be phased in early and take time to establish that we can do the prairie um. As a phase one approach, we know the water tower is going in, which could be shared for parking lot use with uh. With there and then uh look at when development starts to happen, these other phases from the playground perspective, uh phase pickleball. The end. So a lot of it's gonna be phasing over time. So even though the overall project, you know, we're talking about. Quite a bit of money, but we'll piece meal them as part of that uh capital improvement process um when we do that annual uh process review.
On this particular site, I thought that the the amount of acres purchased was originally twenty acres. And I thought we were only gonna be using five for the park. So is this, are we basically? Taken over the rest of the twenty acres and making it a much larger park?
But.
Than designed? Does this looks more than five acres here?
So um we we had reap funding, uh and so that refunding was dedicated to five acres. Uh there's twenty acres. Uh it was, I believe it was seventeen and three um split between the water compartment. But the five acres that you're referring to is actually the reap funding that we got to um purchase of for the property, so.
Good.
Dave, go ahead. Yeah, I guess just a clarifying question. I am on the committee, but. When it comes to the ball field question, I thought. I know we have like demand, but I thought the discussion was more based around the 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 grading of the land and lack of. Flat space to actually put in ball fields, especially on this one here. That's a pretty steep hill, right?
Well, yes, there's, there is grading stuff that is with the ball fields and with the ball field at Willow, the removal of that also with the road impacting. You know, um that was a the big consideration of why that one was removed. Thanks.
Yeah, with the exception of the center core area of this particular property, the rest of the property is five percent above slope and for the type of ball field use here. Seven and a half or two percent is usually desirable. So there's quite a bit of topography out here.
Well, I appreciate the, I appreciate the creativity with each one of them and they're all each a bit different and um. I think they'll be great additions. It 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 would surprise me though that if there isn't a a need for additional like soccer practice fields. And so I mean, I hear that from. You know, it may not be a need for the neighborhood, but anyway, but I'm sure you'll look at that. Anyone else?
Actually.
Uh go ahead.
Seth, can you go back to the waterline part? Can you just talk a little bit more about the detention? The regional detention base and opportunity and how that connects with the.
Yeah, so I mean, I I will just wanna highlight, you know, you know, we've been having conver- conversations and. Uh esp- specifically with this area town, um you know, we don't have. Uh those o- opportunities for um for fishing and and those types of recreation opportunities. So this is something that we'll be looking. Uh forward to more conversations with. Uh we are uh talking to the developer, but. Um this would be a regional detention basis that we would have interest in in there'd be a uh. Uh it'd be a good community asset to have, uh its services. I believe six hundred acres of 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 land. Uh so uh really, when we were looking at this and in meeting with the stakeholders on. Just really how all of this really ties in together uh to make really um a a truly cool public experience.
Appreciate all the thought going into it. Thank you. Okay, our next uh one more, uh yeah, there's one more um presentation on. Design standards updates and new standards.
Yeah, we have Charlie Cowell with RDG planning and design with us again tonight. Um he was here just a couple of weeks ago. Um for the comp plan and now that that has been adopted, we are full steam ahead on that next process step of. Going through those uses that were put on the moratorium list as well as updating some of those design standards, including landscaping and signage. So we did hold a public open house, um very visual oriented last Wednesday out at Lau. To help gain feedback from the residents, but also for those that own property along Marion's corridors. So we sent personal postcards out to all the property owners along the central corridor, um including like Second Avenue. Um we went all the way out to Highway thirteen along with Tower Terrace Road. Highway one hundred as well, Highway thirteen, just to. Get as many people in to provide their input that we could. And then we did ask council to arrive early tonight. Um. And so we were able to update some of those slides. So we can have a well-rounded discussion tonight. We are looking for discussion on this, so that way Charlie and his team. Um can kind of continue tightening up some of those regulations, um standards that um we're wanting to move forward with. Charlie.
Thank you. Welcome, Charlie.
Mayor and council, thank you. Um yeah, we're moving quickly. Uh com- uh conference of plan was adopted on on March twentieth. Um and so we're two weeks from that and and really jumping in here. Uh so we were able during that process to really get some high level vision from folks on what they wanna see on these corridors. And as you know, the centers and corridors chapter of the comp plan deals with that uh quite a bit. Um so today, uh in a lot of the updates to the design standards that we're recommending, uh looking at. Um most i- if if not all of them apply to the corridors uh highlighted here. Tower Terrace Road, Highway thirteen, uh Highway one hundred, and then the Highway one fifty-one to Sixth and Seventh and so on. Um and all of this was to take a look at the moratorium uses in these areas, uh and also the. Standards from architectural landscaping signage, um and any specific use standards we need to. To tweak to get to the vision we wanna see from the comp plan. So uh jumping right in, uh we've already started striking through and underlying the existing ordinance to get ready for. Uh uh bringing forward an update and and tonight we're highlighting some of the the major items you saw out. Out in the lobby, um starting with the use list. So we went through the entire use list uh for all districts that are on. Uh your your list uh for moratorium. Uh and looked specifically at ones we might not want to allow anywhere uh on on certain corridors. Um and so what you see on this map here is uh Tower Terrace Road as the first example. The white dash line, I think you can see it uh there is represents six hundred feet. The black uh dash line uh represents twelve hundred feet and. Uh we're suggesting or recommending potentially a six hundred foot kind of buffer along Tower Terrace Road to. Uh prohibit the uses you see here. Um so this would be nowhere uh along that area. We wanna see these types of things. Um there are other uses we'll talk about, uh such as uh gas stations and deep discount stores that we felt was okay. Uh to happen in a regulated manner uh on Tower Terrace Road through architectural standards, locational standards and that thing and those sorts of things. So we didn't want to necessarily outright um prohibit them uh right now, but that is a discussion item we can, we can talk about. So you can see some of the responses here uh that we got from you all and then from our our public meeting last week. Um we've got general agreement on uh quite a few of these to to limit their use along these, along Tower Terrace Road. Um we've got some that are indifferent, such as retail sales for large um large stores over thirty, thirty thousand square feet. Um just for context, that's uh, I know grocery, fairways, a grocery store, but fairways, fairway model is. Typically under thirty thousand square feet, so we'd be looking at the bigger than that as far as uh defining that. Um obviously, all of these are subject to, uh even if they were allowed to adequate lot sizes, the the right location, somebody actually wanting to do that too. So those are things to consider as well. So just a a handful of items here, moving on to the Highway one fifty-one corridor, not, not a whole lot in this quarter we felt was necessary to fully uh prohibit. Um just a a handful of items, self-storage, interior, self-storage, motor vehicle story, storage, crematory retort, or just, just the three we thought. We wanna um make less visible from from the corridor. And the same is the situation with Highway thirteen, just a couple we thought uh were necessary to to think about prohibiting. Um again, uh a lot of other items on on that use list that we went through and looked at and a few I wanna highlight here that. We're suggesting still allowing on the corridors, but maybe with some additional standards um and requirements to make sure that we're not um. We're not impacting surrounding neighborhoods. I guess I forgot one here too, that's sorry. The central corridor, really just one item from the list that that we had as a recommendation, that was pawn shops for the central corridor districts. Um and it looks like we had some disagree, uh some differing opinions on this one, so. Obviously a discussion item too that we'd be interested to hear your thoughts about too. So a handful of uh items that we, we went through your existing code. Uh picked out uh things that we thought maybe needed to be boosted a little bit uh to make sure that we're not uh influencing or or. Having negative impacts on surrounding neighbors or property. Um what's highlighted in dark blue on the screen is in your existing code today, along with a number of other standards. Uh and the light blue here are some suggestions that we're recommending to uh for the corridors. Car washes, uh really you have some pretty good standards today, just a few things that we can clarify, we're suggesting clarifying. Um is orientation of the actual, the drive bays so that lights aren't shining into residential properties. So making sure. They're adjacent to residential, they're oriented in a a certain way. Uh same with vacuum stations, um putting them behind the the structure or some other um area that's less visible uh from the roadway. So they wouldn't be out front, they'd kind of be on the side or back of that location. Similarly with drive-through facilities, um a lot of good stuff in your code today that that has a lot of good design elements. Uh we're just suggesting adding in um not on the corridors, not allowing the stacking spaces or the drive-through lane. To be between the building and and the street. So um you wouldn't see the menu board from. Tower Terrace Road, for example, you'd have, it'd be behind or on the side of the building uh instead of out out front. And then gas stations, this is one we've had a lot of discussion about, uh particularly related to Tower Terrace Road. Um again, there's a lot of good design standards in your code today for gas stations. Uh for example. Gas pumps having to be located um behind the building unless it's on a corner lot, then it would be visible. Um architectural standards, things like that. Uh but we did uh look at uh some additional items to think about, uh limiting the pump canopies, the length of them on Tower Terrace. Uh on certain areas to um so we don't have them kind of a massive canopy location. Um on Tower Terrace Road specifically, we were thinking. We don't want them, we heard a lot from people that we don't want them everywhere. So how do we strategically think about allowing gas stations in that area? Cause we also heard we need a gas station in the north side of town. Um so we're proposing right now is limiting the locations to be on arterial street intersections uh would be the the locational requirement. So. That would be Tower Terrace and Albert Net Road, um Tenth Street, Thirty-Fifth, Highway thirteen. And then if and when um Forty-Fourth Street continues to go north. Heard agreement on that, but we also heard maybe thinking about a distance requirement instead, just not thinking about intersections, but more the distance between two. Um gas stations, whether that's a thousand feet or whatever, uh whatever it would be, so. And then lastly, uh for Tower Terrace Road, uh limiting the number of gas pumps so that we don't, we aren't having kind of a huge. Massive highway gas station design up in that area. Again, a lot of these depend on the lot sizes available, the type of um. Uh ownership and development that's coming into, but these are some protections that we're considering adding for that area. So I think the gas station, one of the biggest thi- discussion item is. The locational requirements that we're hearing both sides right now. A couple other unit uh use items here before kind of switching to some architectural standards real quickly. Um multi-unit dwellings today, they're not allowed at all uh in B C districts, your commercial district, uh unless they're upper story residential units. Um from the comp plan, a lot of mixed use discussion and and thought about apartments. Uh we did, obviously here, we don't want. Our corridors to be full of apartments, but a consideration to allow uh more mixed use, more housing units is allowing them. Um in the B C district as long as they're behind the prince, behind the other commercial uses. So it's more of a horizontal mixed use rather than a upper lower mixed use. Um so the arterial would still be. Corridor would still be fronted with commercial, but there could be a residential component behind it. Artist live work, also one we've talked about a lot uh with folks. Um we had uh chamber representatives, other owners represented. Yet uh last week, there's general agreement on on how this is laid out here in your code today. Um artist live work or live work is just subject to home occupation standards, which aren't terribly. They're actually quite restrictive to the work component of the use. Um so this would allow a little bit more flexibility for the work component. Um basically still maintaining the commercial at the front entryway, residential has to be back or above. Um as well. And then lastly, from the use standpoint, there was some uses of. W- when looking at the list uh and hearing input from the comp plan that we might wanna, uh we're thinking about. Recommending a a distance requirement between two uses. So for example, um dispensaries today, they're, they have a distance requirement. They can't be within a thousand feet from school, park, maybe some other things. And works, we're suggesting adding also from another dispensary. So. A distance requirements from each other as well. Same with liquor, smoke and vape shops. So I'll stop here uh cause the the rest of the slides are pretty higher level, not as much detail. And just if anyone has any questions on the use specific items, happy to answer those.
Charlie, um if if we can back up to the gas pump.
Yeah.
Gas station. Um on the last item shown there, maximum of eight gas pumps per station along Tower Terrace. Is, is that? I- is that a double eight gas?
I knew you were gonna ask that.
Double sided? Or are they, or or is it uh maybe let's say the number of hoses that are available?
It's, it it would be intended to be the number of hoses, so four stations, eight pumps.
Okay.
Um eight, well, I shouldn't say pumps, eight uh.
Ours.
Structures or whatever.
Eight dispensing points.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Charlie, a couple of questions on that too. Uh so I, if I'm looking at one that that I personally use all the time as Quick Star. Out here on Seventh and Thirty-First. So uh when you talk about the canopy of a hundred feet, I have no idea how big that is offhand. But if I look at the number of pumps there, that's more than eight.
Oh yeah, yeah, they probably have thirty, maybe sixteen stations out there. And thirty, so that'd be thirty-two.
Yeah, so, um I mean, I don't, I don't consider that if you got the right size and if you, especially if you're on Tower Terrace. And you're gonna be limiting the number, they're gonna be those distances that you described at Albert Net. Tenth Street, Highway thirteen, I mean, those distances are quite long ways apart. So I I'm I'm not opposed to adding more. I mean, a Quick Star type place that that is, to me, fits in. A few locations along there. You just don't want too many of them like you described. So to me, that seems okay.
Yeah.
The comment I was making to you out here wasn't so much about the distance apart on Tower Terrace. As how do we control the number, you're you're kind of controlling the number of of. Uh facilities that can serve alcohol or tobacco by having those at least a mile apart. And I'm suggesting at least some restriction along uh Seventh or Highway one fifty-one. And the business district of how close they can be through there. So I don't know what we have today. But.
No restriction, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what that restriction is, but I don't know if we have one. And I'm just saying, I think we need to have something through there, uh cause if you look at the future development of Highway one fifty-one through town. The development of that on the south side of the road compared to the north side is gonna be completely different. Since the north side of the road only has half a block deep.
Right.
So that's gonna accommodate smoke shops and alcohol shops and they serve liquor on those. Whereas the other side of the street would be deep enough, big enough to accommodate convenience stores and gas stations. So. How often we allow those? I mean, if you look at around Thirty-First Street, we got a cluster of three right there.
Yep.
And I just don't wanna see our corridor through there clustered with a lot more. Uh gas stations and convenience stores, so.
Don't make sense. Yeah, I would, eight is definitely eight, uh going back to the pumps, eight is probably the lowest we would. It would, would ever be.
That's real low.
Would ever be viable. So I, you know, sixteen is doable, even, even a little more is is fine. A hundred feet for a canopy is is also, um they would build the canopy to the number of pumps anyway, if they wouldn't just put a.
Mayor, um just for reference, Quick Star.
Mayor, um, just for reference, Quick Star canopy is about 120 feet, the come and go is 190 and Hy-Vee is 140.
Sarah.
Continuing on the gas pump conversation. Is there a difference between, we we've heard of gas stations and convenience stores, is there a difference in that? Because it kind of goes to my question of, we're talking a lot about the outside piece, but I also think about, there's also a difference when people look at what's offered inside. Facilities, does any of that get dealt with here?
Yeah, yeah, so every city does it a little bit different, Marion has it to where the gas station is defined as the the. Obviously, the fuel dispensing and then also any accessory convenience uses that might be in a accessory or a store location. And then thing, if the gas pumps weren't present, it'd either be a retail store or grocery store if there weren't gas station or weren't pumps there, so. It is defined in that way today, it's not saying if we need to switch it, we can't define convenience stores separately and then. Call out something more, as far as the liquor store is concerned, or that 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 would have to read us, reach a certain threshold to be defined that. A certain amount of the floor space would have to be that type of a retail sale.
To be considered the liquor store, because I think, you know, there's. In the neighborhood, I think we've come pretty accustomed to having that, especially there's no grocery stores there as well, so the. Opportunity to have something more than. The lowest offering gas pump type of service would be something, at least on the tower, I'm looking at the Tower Terrace. Corridor at this juncture, more than others, but. However, that has to happen, I think that would be great.
So the. Smaller size or fewer pumps, you know, was something I brought up. You know, I travel a lot and I I just notice places I go that where where it's done very well. And you don't have these overbearing massive gas stations with. You know, 32, maybe eight is, you know, too too few, I don't know, but 32 is too many, I think. You you know, somewhere in between, so that it it they're, they're not these 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 massive places, and if if you're going to have more, certainly. Require more landscaping and and screening and those kinds of things. From the street, because you you know, it just, it just sticks out and and may not be compatible with a residential area. You know, a big one like that belongs on the highway, it belongs in a in a major corridor. But in a in a largely residential area, I think smaller is better, fewer pumps is better. So that's just my my personal view, but.
Can you also, could you give, we'll jump from the gas station conversation this point. You talked about residential behind retail, can you? I don't know that I, when I hear that at first, I'm like, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it'd be for a large site, so you can think, this, actually, this picture here is from Coralville. So there's a corridor, there's a commercial, multi-story commercial out front, and then there's resident, like an apartment. Structure in the back for for some residents to sit, so. Yeah, we talk about mixed-use in multiple ways, one is the upper story, we call vertical mixed-use, and the other is horizontal where there's separate buildings where. So the idea would be to allow that to happen. But still maintain the commercial frontage on. The corridors, as we talked about in our our meetings at the cop plan, that we don't want to see apartments on our entryways as the main feature. And just a reminder, today in the B C district, which is your base commercial district, a standalone apartment is is not allowed. It'd have to be an upper story, commercial ground floor situation.
Good answer to the question, thank you.
Anyone else?
So what what type, or do you have more to share?
I I can just run through a handful of these here, you saw all these out there, but we're also, we've already started drafting landscape standards to. Pretty much agreement on what needs to be done here, I'm not going to talk too much, you have a lot of existing standards that are taking care of the concerns that we're we're hearing about, but the few minor things. On landscaping that will take care of us, one item in particular is. If a fence is used as the the screening feature, there has to be a landscape element to it as well, so it's not just a a blank fence. Architectural as well, a lot of agreement here, you have material standards today, the one item on. Materials that that we are proposing that is a different, different than today is that anywhere. 600 feet of the corridors would be subject to material standards, so today. You don't require material standards for manufacturing buildings, or manufacturing districts, excuse me, on the corridors, so. Not a ton of manufacturing on the quarters, but there is some, Highway 151, Highway 13, we're proposing adding material standards for those.
Can you just explain material standards?
Yes, so today you require a combination of brick, stone. Architectural, metal, a variety of different things for commercial buildings. And manufacturing districts are exempt from that requirement.
Okay, and would would that apply also to city buildings?
Yes, and that does today currently.
Well.
Unless there, I guess I shouldn't say that, if it's in a manufacturing district, no, yeah.
Okay. And, okay, so then you you wouldn't be able to put up a 100% metal building. On one of those major, up against. The roadway on all those major corridors, like 13 and 151, it would have to have some other material, brick or stone, or. So some sort of architectural.
Yep.
Material, okay. Okay, is that clear for everybody? I think that's what we were trying to get to, so.
Yeah, the one thing that is missing from your standards today is a little bit more detail on the, not just the materials, but the actual ar- architecture of the building. So it's not just a blank wall of brick, for example, or multiple brick and stone or whatever. So we're, you know, there's some things we're considering, or we're recommending to make sure the break of that up a little bit as well. And this was just a catch-all slide, so signs, not going to touch on this much, but. All signs are not allowed today, we would continue that, focusing on monument signage. And looking at some other areas, we need to be more flexible and and as I mentioned last time, content neutral, so. Not have, not having to read the sign to regulate it, so. So big picture, like I said, we we kind of, we have a lot of this language drafted already, we've got some feedback from last week and from today that we know we need to make some edits on. And this is being accompanied with a guidebook of images and stuff, so it's not just going to be. Boring narrative, you'll have some guidance as well in a associated book that isn't going to be ordinance, but would be a separate document as well, so. We'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks to get a draft out, planning commission and working backwards from city council approvals. First, second and third reading coming up here in the next couple of months.
Hey, progress, Kim, you have something to add?
There we go, I just wanted to share, you know, we really appreciate all of the input that we've had over this last little over a year. From the comp plan design to even the design standards and then focusing on some of the moratorium. And then those ordinance changes that come along with it, so as Charlie was explaining, you know, we're we're doing the moratorium, the design standards and the ordinance changes. Parallel to one another, so it will feel like a lot of things coming your way. But just, I know that's, you know, we're trying to meet the timeline, we said that we wanted to be able to have the moratorium completed before July 1. So that's the work that we're doing to keep everything parallel to one another so that we can meet that timeline. With that, it was really important tonight just to talk about those things that were really specific, not only. You know, to you, but the residents that we've heard also over this last year from the focus groups to those that have that attended open houses. So there's been a lot of input in this process along the way. I was trying to think of how many touchpoints we've had just over the year and, I mean. We're up in the like 30s of how many times we've met, not only at this level, but planning and zoning and then the steering committee. Along with the focus groups and and meeting with our school districts and all of all of those that help form our community. So we're, we'll take these, we'll take all this information that we had today along from open house and your input, and this will now, as Charlie said. Get developed and then we'll present this to planning and zoning here in the next month. A little less than a month now, I think, but if there's anything that, as you're kind of reflecting back on this conversation. If there's anything that you think we've missed, because we want to make sure that we've touched, that we've. Unturned every stone and did all the things that we need to do, so that way as we move forward. You feel like you've got your head kind of wrapped around all the work that we've done, along with the residents and our business community and developers as they work through these changes. So I just really ask if there's anything that you think we've missed, anything that we need to be talking about, that we can make sure that we get that to planning and zoning and then. Be able to then come back to you as city council as we touch each of these sections.
Okay, thank you to everyone for your work on this, I know it's been a long process, but I think it, you know, it's no secret, I I think this is the most. Not one, one of the most, if not the most important thing we could be doing right now, it had had worried me that we were. Ready to really take off with development, with all the interests we've been able to generate in Marion and that we weren't quite. Prepared with our design standards, with our zoning, and that we want to get to a point where. We can look back in 20 years and say, we really did it the right way and the community looks great and everyone's proud of it, everyone's proud of where they live in it. And it just creates more opportunity for everyone to thrive here, whether it's a business or families, because. The community looks great, it feels great, it's everything, everything adds value and. It 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 works, it works well, and so it's a very important process and I appreciate the time that's been put into it, so. Thank you, Charlie and Nicole and Kim and everyone else who's who's worked on it and the engagement of so many stakeholders. I think at the end of the day, it leads to a much more successful process, you know, that you engage the business community and the developers and. Council, of course, and and our community partners and staff and everyone that's been engaged and of course the residents, so. There's nothing else, if you have anything else to add?
No, yeah.
Thank you, look forward to seeing the results here.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, this brings us to our first public forum for this evening, we have two public forums, the first one is. A time to address council on items that are on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. If anyone is here to address council on an item that is associated with a public hearing, there will be time to address council at that time. And there will be a. Public forum section at the end of the meeting for any topic, but the first one right now is for. Items that are on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, I'd like to review the rules for. Participating in the public forum sections. Please fill out the yellow card at the end of the table and hand it to the city clerk before you speak. Please do not approach the dais where the council sits, if you have handouts, please submit them to the city clerk for distribution to the council. Please step up to the podium and speak into the microphone because the meeting is recorded. In order to preserve decorum, please address the members of the council as mayor and council members. If you wish to speak, please understand that you have a maximum of five minutes and we'll be reminded at the one minute mark. Please do not engage in speech or conduct that is imminently threatening to any person or which incites violence or which is obscene. Please do not make disparaging remarks about any individual that keep the comments pertinent to the topic at hand. Please avoid repeating any comments made by other people, other persons who have spoken before you. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting. Or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to guidelines or engaging in any disruptive speech or behavior will after a warning result in removal from the meeting, appreciate. We appreciate everyone's cooperation with these guidelines. And at this time, we'll open the public forum for comments on any topic associated or on a associated with a with a. Agenda item but not part of a public hearing, please come forward if anyone's here to address council. Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting and we'll proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows, items A1 through D11, resolutions 32315 through 32335.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through D11, resolutions 32315 through 32335. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved, for the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows, items A1 through D1, resolution 32336. Through 32338.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows, items A1 through D2, resolutions 32336 through 32338. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with the mayor's abstention, I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-03, establishing chapter 214 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding mobile food units, this is the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 25-03, establishing chapter 214 of the Marion Code of Ordinances. Regarding mobile food units, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number 25-03, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing on a development agreement with Community Housing Initiatives, Inc. Related to the Tulip Tree Apartments, do we have a presentation?
Yes, Your Honor, this is for property located at 728 Oak Brook Drive, as you mentioned, it's known as Tulip Tree Apartments. This is a senior housing complex with 40 rental units and it is participating in the low-income housing tax credit program with the Iowa Finance Authority. This is, this is one has been a long time coming, we, city council approved a memorandum of understanding with Community Housing Initiatives. Back in 2021, the project had been amended into the Collins Road Urban Renewal Plan. And this is just the final step of going through the public hearing and development agreement process. Instead of being offered is a 10-year 100% rebate with a maximum of $450,000.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is open, if anyone is here to address council on this measure, either in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if you received any comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
The end?
I have not.
Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 32339, approving development agreement with Community Housing Initiatives Incorporated. Authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement, Tulip Tree Apartments.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. To approve resolution number 32339, approving the development agreement with Community Housing Initiatives. And authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement, any discussion? I would just add, this, this was a really great project, very well done, it's, I think, I believe it's nonprofit, right? It was a nonprofit project, but very, very good quality project and. It's really added a nice option for older adults in our community for affordable rental housing. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 32339, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 32340, approving the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement with the Young Man's Christian Association of the Cedar Rapids Metropolitan Area YMCA regarding operations of the Marion Recreation Center.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 32340, approving the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement with the YMCA regarding the operations of the Marion Recreation Center. Discussion? Go ahead.
Just that I will be abstaining for this vote because of the conflict employer.
Or to avoid a conflict?
To avoid a conflict.
Okay. Any, any other discussion before we vote? Okay. I will say thank you to the staff and the Y staff also for working through these concerns and, and resolving them in, 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 in this way. So thank you for everyone for your work and coming up with workable solutions. All those in favor of resolution number 32340, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-05, amending chapter 324 of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to weeds, weeds definitions and natural landscaping. This is our initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 25-05, amending chapter 2324 of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to weed definitions and natural landscaping. Discussion? Go ahead.
I, I will just say, Brent, thanks for the, the, I guess I'll call it a draft for this purposes of permitted plants and shrubbery. Appreciate that. It preexists. It'll be out there. So when this goes live, we'll have the list. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-05, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-04, approving amendment to section 313-10.6E of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to prohibited parking. And this is our final consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 25-04, approving amendment to section 313-10.6E of the Code of Ordinances related to prohibited parking. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number 25-04, final consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing for the 2025 sidewalk ramp project. We'll open the public hearing and take a presentation. Jake, you have one? Okay, and then, and then we'll have comments from the public. Go ahead.
Right. Good evening. This is a public hearing on the 2025 sidewalk ramp project. This is our annual project where we replace non-compliant ADA ramps at our, along our curbs. We received six bids on last week from Hunk, with a low bid from Hunk Construction at $167,000. A little over $167,000, excuse me, which is 87.4% of the engineer's estimate. Work cannot begin until after May 27th and must begin before July 14th and be completed within 55 working days with $300 per day in liquidated damages.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll ask for comments from members of the public. If anyone's here to address council on this measure, please come forward. We'll ask the staff if you've received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
I have not.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the 2025 sidewalk ramp project, ANN-18-106 as follows, resolution 32341 to 32342.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2025 sidewalk ramp repair project, including resolutions 32341 through 32342. Discussion? Yes.
Jake, this kind of astounds me, astounds me that there are this many sidewalk ramps in Marion. I don't know that I've seen this number before, but I guess at our current pace, do you have sort of a guesstimate as to when we will have all of the existing ones compliant?
I don't have that offhand right now. I will just say that the number of ramps, so like on the, on the picture there on the screen, that's considered two ramps. So every intersection that has that has eight ramps. We are doing 50 ramps with this project.
Okay. Okay, so it's gonna be a long-term campaign.
Long haul.
The never-ending project, because as, as council member Mencer just noted, I think what we've been told in the past is that the, that the regulations change all the time, so you're never fully caught up or
Correct. And my 15 years, they've, they've changed the more than handful of times in the 15 years I've been an engineer. Yeah.
But we, you know, we do a number of them every year and just keep, keep plugging away at it.
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the project calendar for the 2025 sidewalk ramp repair project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding amendment of chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances relating the zoning definitions in central corridor districts. We'll open the public hearing and take our, we have a report from, okay, Nicole, come on forward.
Just a brief one, again, from Tuesday when we walked through this. So we have two things that we are bringing forward. We're bringing them forward at this time versus with what Charlie was here presenting because they are completely separate. These don't have to do with any of the more current uses or design standards, that sort of thing. These two items are things that we've discovered as staff that we thought were already in existence in our code and we're just kind of cleaning that language up with these amendments. So the first one being terms defined or retail sales small. Right now, we require at least a square footage size of 5,000 square feet. A lot of our, especially uptown business tenants for retail, they do hit under that minimum size. So again, it's just kind of cleaning some of that up that we don't want them to go away. It's either creating a new definition and allowance for that smaller scale or removing the minimum in the, in the small definition. The second item being outdoor dining for sidewalk cafes specifically. We, as we went through the recertification process, the specific use standards associated with these outdoor sidewalk cafes made it into the code. But where they were permitted as an accessory use, I'm kind of fell through the cracks. We're just making sure that that's back on the books like we thought it was. So the U1, the U2 and the UTC 1 districts, again, as that accessory use. This is why we are asking also that council waive the second and third readings today because these are both items that we want to make sure we are providing our businesses in Marion as well and I assume they made it through the certification process, so. Questions?
Okay, we'll have questions during the discussion, during the motion. So at this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council on this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the staff if you've received comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
I have not.
Okay, thanks. Note that for the record and we will close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-06, amending chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to zoning definitions in central corridor districts. Initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-06, amending chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances relating the zoning definitions in central corridor districts. Discussion? Now we can have questions for Nicole if you have any. Okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-06, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the second consideration of ordinance number 25-06.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and move to the second consideration of ordinance number 25-06. Any discussion on suspending the rules?
Your honor?
Yes.
Yeah, Nicole, what's the basis for suspending the rules?
As far as the legal aspect or why I'm requesting it?
Yeah, why, why are we requesting to move directly into further considerations tonight?
It's two things that we thought were already permitted within our code and it's just to clean that up, especially heading into spring and sidewalk cafes wanting to occur.
Okay, I just wanted to, for the public record to have that clear.
I get that, yep.
Thanks.
And it's already covered in the code and we're just cleaning it up and so that we don't expect that anyone's gonna have any issue with it or right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any further discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules and proceeding to the second consideration of ordinance number 25-06, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-06, amending chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to zoning definitions in central corridor districts and this is the second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 25-06. Discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-06, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 25-06.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 25-06. Discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules and proceeding to the final consideration for ordinance number 25-06, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-06, amending chapter 340 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to zoning definitions in central corridor districts and this is the final consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 25-06. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 25-06, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Our final public hearing this evening is regarding amendments to chapter 126, Article 1 Building Code, chapter 126, Article 2 Plumbing Code, chapter 126, Article 4 Mechanical Code, chapter 126, Article 6 Housing Code, chapter 223 Nuisance Abatement and chapter 247 Property Maintenance in the Marion Code of Ordinances. We have a presentation?
We do.
Gary?
Good evening, mayor and council. We'll get right into it. The reason, one of the reasons why we update our codes is something has happened in the past, so we try and update our codes. That has happened throughout the, the history of the codes. I wanted to show you this picture. This is one where there's, the apartment complex is down on Grand Avenue after Duratio. They lost the siding. If you look at the very back corner, there's a building that lost its roof. We feel that the code change that we've added with the attachment of the trusses to the walls will take care of that. But the siding part of it, we've never really taken care of. This picture is a picture of, of the, one of those buildings that had foam board underneath the siding. It obviously was not installed properly and the wind has taken some of it off and we're trying to prevent that with our, with our ordinances changed in this one. And then I wanted to bring your attention to another item. This is one that we changed the code in 2015. And we, we, it was already a fire separation required, but this updated the fire separation and made it more stringent. And if you look at this picture here, this is a duplex that was built and it was not occupied at the time. Fire started on one side and it, and it burnt the side and the fire department got it put out. They saved the second side. Fire separation is really what gave fire department time to get there. If you look at the pictures on the lower right-hand corner, that's the side that had the fire separation. And if you look at the top right, that's the other side. You can see there absolutely no damage to it. There was probably a little bit of smoke damage, but the building wasn't really finished at the time, so the fire separation did work. So there are reasons we always update the codes. It happens every three years and that's, and that's, there's always reasons for that. So I wanted to talk a little bit, we, we kind of met a couple, a couple of weeks ago at the last council meeting. We talked about some of these things. We always update our code year because of the code change. We added some, a couple building items we had and we never had tiny houses in our code. It's, we still don't have any tiny houses in Marion, but everybody's talking about them, so try and be proactive. We decided to try and do that. One of the other things we added is existing building code. The, the code vaguely references existing buildings. We wanted to make it that you could have a separate code for vacant buildings or for existing buildings as well. And then we decided to go back to what the code said and we are gonna get permits for any small structures that are, that are 200 square foot or over instead of 120 square foot or over. Again, the only ones that's gonna really affect is our residential and we have very few of those that residents have built that size of a, of a shed. And then we have the, the wind and snow load changes. We're recommending to go ahead and go with 108 miles an hour. That's what the rest of the jurisdictions in our metro area are gonna go to. Our snow load is 36 pounds per square foot where we were actually 30 pounds and we're going heavier. There is still talking within the metro area that we, if we can all get on the same numbers, we would like to do that, but for now, we're gonna go with the 36s and, and go from there. The one that we really have changed is this is the one with the structural sheeting that's required with the foam board. We're hoping that this will prevent the, the picture that we had with the Grand Avenue apartments down there. It's still to be seen, but you have, you'll have structural plywood to, to hold the nails for the siding. If the, if the nails are nailed into the studs, then there's usually not a problem. If they happen to miss the studs, then they have problems. Well, with the, with the structural plywood, that one will, will change that and hopefully hold the siding on better. And Steve, to your question about the thickness of the, of the structural plywood, there's actually a code section in the ordinance that we changed that references a table and tells us which material that they're using and it tells us how thick it has to be for the material they're using. So it, it's in there. I didn't put a, I didn't change anything with that. And then a couple of items that we talked about the last time, it looks like it's a big change, but it's really not. Both the duplicate language for the smoke alarms and the, and the sprinkler requirements. We had them written into our ordinance, but the code has changed and, and we're real similar, almost identical to, to the language. So we decided that it was not pertinent to, to leave it in there and make the change every time we updated our ordinance. I did talk to deputy chief Hanson and fire marshal flew hardy about it and they were both in agreeance that this was, was an okay change. One thing we didn't talk about the last time was the removal of a barrier around an in-ground swimming pool. The, the swimming pool code says if you have a in-ground pool, you have a automatic clothing cover that, that meets a certain ASTM number, that you don't have to have a barrier around your pool. We had an appeal not quite a year ago about one and the, the construction code review board decided at that time that we could lower the standard for the, the barrier around it. And they also discussed a lot about whether we actually really needed it since the, the, the pool and Spaco did not require it. Why are we requiring it? Where other jurisdictions are not requiring it? So we decided to pull that out. So now if you have an in-ground pool, you have the power cover that's rated with the ASTM number, you ASTM number, you do not have to have a barrier. And the, the construction code review board was, was all over, said that was fine, they didn't have any issues with that at all. And then we also changed our pool drainage in our, in our code to match what the engineering department has in their SUDOS, so we just wanted to clean that language up a little bit. Other items, the, the plumbing code, we just really corrected the year. We had expiration permits that was wrong, so we got that straightened out. Mechanical code, again, the code year, there was some department change within the state. In the, it used to be Department of Public Health, and now it's the Department of, of Inspection Appeals and Licensing. We just wanted to get that language straight. Housing code, we changed some wording on the unsafe structures to be closer to what the nuisance code and what the, and the property maintenance code says, so we changed that. And then we also were gonna require a ten-year sealed battery in smoke alarms that are in apartments. It seems that what happens is that, that once the alarms start beeping, they take the batteries out. I'm sure they have good intentions to put the batteries back in, but I know for a fact that fire department has called us before and said, hey, we got called to this, and it was fire damage, and the smoke alarms were not, did not have batteries in them. So this should prevent that. It's a ten-year battery, the smoke alarms are good for ten years. Once the battery starts to beep, they throw the smoke alarms away, they put in new ones. That's upon, that's to the landlord's responsibility, but we think that should help with that. Nuisance abatement, we just changed some wording on that, so we have a wider spectrum of, of enforcement when it comes to building prints that are not getting completed, a lot of siding and windows and stuff, and they all, we have people that have siding off their house, and then the neighbor complains, and the, it's just, it's a mess. We, we don't have a lot of, we didn't have a lot of, of code enforcement for that, so now we've changed the language, and, and that should be a little clearer. And then the property maintenance code, we added some definitions in there. We added the, the, who the property maintenance official is. It was a little vague on the, on us, so we wanted to clear that up, and we fixed that. Again, we changed some, the unsafe structures and made it match what the housing code is. And then we did add sidewalks and driveway section to our code, and the reason we did that is that there's a lot of times that the, you know, the city will take care of anything in the right of way. Well, they won't take care of, they'll enforce anything in the right of way. The, the engineering department does a good job of that. But if it's not in the, if it's not in the right of way, if it's going up to the house or it's a driveway that has very unlevel surfaces, makes it very dangerous to walk on, we wanted to get that fixed. We added that to the code, and then we also, at the same time, added the snow and ice part of it. Again, Parks does a really good job of, of cleaning or making people clean their snow within the thirty-six hours after it snows. We've changed our ordinance to add that to driveways and sidewalks that are not in the, in the right of way. We have tenants that call and say their sidewalks aren't clean, or their driveway's not clean. This should help prevent that, and we should be, it gives us a, a method of enforcement for that, so that's why we did that one. All of our, our staff and, and construction code review board and the nuisance enforcement, property maintenance board all recommend that we go forward with these updates.
Thank you, Gary. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition, please come forward.
Welcome.
Mayor and city council, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Drew Retsch. I'm vice president of Jerry's Homes, past president of the Home Builders Association of Iowa, past president of Cedar Rapids Home Builders Association. I sit on committees for the National Association of Home Builders, and I'm on the State of Iowa Building Advisory Code, and I've been in building for damn near forty years, so I mean, I've done a lot of, a lot of homes and stuff. So I'm here to speak about the code process and housing attainability. I don't like to use the word affordability, because it's just like, that, that word's been used for where they take yours and my tax dollars and subsidize somebody else's housing. So the NAHB does a housing priced-out study every year, and for every thousand dollars we increase the cost of housing in Iowa, we're pricing out eleven-hundred families from being able to obtain that housing. Now, most decision-makers find it easy to pass regulations and, and cost increases on new construction, but they don't realize that new construction and existing homes have a direct correlation in the valuation of what goes there. So as you raise new construction costs, you raise all of the housing prices in the community, and therefore, we get to where we are today with a housing crisis and unattainability. The, the problem is, though, your existing homes don't have the warranties, they don't have the energy efficiencies, they don't have all the newer products and stuff in them, but their price still goes up along with that. The cost of regulation, the NAHB does a study on that and says that twenty-five percent of the cost of a new home is due to regulation, and that's at the federal level, the state level, and especially the local level. That's your design standards, that's your construction standards, that's your codes, and thirty-five percent of the cost of a multifamily i- is due to the same kind of things. So I, I just wanna make, make you aware of where all that's going. So to get on to things, code cycles every three years, it's getting a little overzealous, in my opinion. It's more about printing books so that you guys have to buy new books, and it's more about training so that your people are up to, to speed in training on what those new code cycles are. The, the process has been, been hijacked from special interests and manufacturers to get their products into the code versus the health and safety that it was originally intended to be. Now, again, I've been here for a long time, a lot of years, and, you know, back in the eighties and nineties, before the modern codes were really adopted, yes, every code cycle was an improvement, but today, we're, we're, we're pretty dang safe, I'd say, Gary, wouldn't you? For the most part, yeah. So, so I would, I would recommend trying to go to a longer code cycle adoption, save yourself some money in the city process. Now, every code cycle I've ever seen until this last one, the 2024, increased the cost of housing. So for instance, the 2018 to 21 code adoption cycle increased the cost of housing fifty-seven-hundred dollars. So I, I'm here to actually commend Gary and his staff for going to the 2024. It's the first code cycle that we get to save twenty-two-hundred dollars with that, and that's because, obviously, the 2021 was a little overzealous, I would say, in the things that they were putting out there, and they dialed them back a little bit and gave us some more options to work with. But enough of all the background. I'm, I'm really here to speak to about the, the section one-twenty-six fifteen on the, the foam sheeting aspect of, of the homes. Now, the code allows for foam sheeting as unamended, and the reason for that is because there's scientific ways to do it. And your siding is supposed to be nailed in the stud, whether you're using OSB for sheeting or whether you're using foam for sheeting. The home I live in is foam sheeted one-hundred percent, and I didn't have any damage at all on my house during Duratio in 2020. Is that correct? I gotta look at my notes here.
It's 2020.
Yeah. The, the, the damage I got was from the house behind me that was sheeted with OSB that blew up and all the debris hitting me to the west. And I live out in Atkins, where we had the highest recorded speeds of wind at that area. So I, I would recommend or, or ask you to reconsider the OSB sheeting, because your siding is not properly installed per manufacturer's recommendations unless you're putting it in a stud. And you can't make enough rules to weed out the bad actors. They always find a way to exist.
Thirty seconds remaining.
So that, that's what I'm here to, to talk about, ask you to keep us an option of putting foam sheeting on. Again, the house I live in is foam sheeted, the house that I'm building right now to move into is foam sheeted, and I love this foam sheeting because I know when I hit a stud. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address counsel, please come forward. Have you lost the staff who have received other comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
Gary?
Um, I just, I've had a conversation with, with Drew Retsch, the only one I've had conversation with, so.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the ordinances.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero seven, amending chapter one-twenty-six, article one of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding building code. Initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero seven, amending chapter one-twenty-six, article one of the Code of Ordinances regarding building code. Discussion? Go ahead.
From the comments we just heard, what, where does that fall? Which, is this under this one, the building code?
Yes.
I want to clarify that. Okay. So discussion questions for Gary? Go ahead, Steve.
Well, the first one, I guess, if we don't have the information tonight, I know this is just the initial consideration. That's, I know that it was one of the major things that you're proposing, is going from foam sheeting to OSB, so if there's more, if I could call it technical information, we can have at least by the next reading. I think that'd be good. My question that I want to ask, though, is on the snow loads, you made a comment that we're going from thirty to thirty-six PSF, but we're different than other cities, so if we're different, why are we different? Because I thought in areas like that, we would want to be standardized for the benefit of the builders.
So the, the, the building coder has changed, and they've, they're now using a, a website that is, calculates our wind loads and our snow loads in our, in our area, and it calculates it by zip code. So what we have in Marion, for instance, is thirty-six point four is what it actually comes up to. We rounded it down. Iowa's, on the, on the other hand, is thirty-five point seven, they're gonna round it up.
Right.
So it just is one of those things that the, the, why they changed to, to go to this thing, they, they say it's more accurate by zip code. Before, they had to, if, if you ever look at the tables, it gives us a line of the north and the south and goes east and west, and it says this area would be thirty pounds and the area below, which is like Iowa City and some of those, they were, they were less, and if you go north up into Minnesota and northern Iowa, it's more. So they, instead of having that, that, that graph that shows the different areas, they've just changed it to the website and says, okay, put in your zip code, put in your address, and it'll calculate it for you. I, the two only thing I, I don't know, I mean, there's commentary on it, but it's, it's, it's what they've done. They, they feel it's more accurate than, than their, their graph that they had in the, in the code in the past.
So is that something that is gonna be, if that's going by zip code, that's something that's subject to change on a periodic basis because of some scientific determination that's out there on winds and snow loads?
It could be, and, and my, my thoughts of that is that we've never had any failures at the thirty pound.
Yeah.
And now they're, and now they're wanting to go to thirty-six. And, and for instance, Cedar Rapids has, what, five different zip codes? So they could have, they could have a couple, two, three, maybe even five different snow loads in their area. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and that's why our, our local jurisdictions are trying to get together so we can come up with a number that fits everybody.
It would seem to make sense to take the entire Lynn County area and come up with one average and agree upon that for the benefit of the, the builders.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, that's just at least my, my recommendation or suggestion. All right, thanks.
Okay. Gary, relative to the foam issue, when a wall is constructed and if that kind of sheeting is being used, is there also reinforcement of the wall with diagonal tensioning so that the, the, the wall itself doesn't rack out of square?
Yeah, so with, with, you're talking with the foam board without, without the structural sheeting.
Correct.
So with the foam board and, and no structural sheeting, there's a, there is a brace that has to go in there, a diagonal brace, which they typically cut into the inside, and they, it's a metal brace, and they, and it goes diagonal, and that does help with your wind bracing. With, with foam sheeting, you also have to, there's also a drywall increase in fasteners, so that, that's another thing that our building department has to look at, our inspectors have to look for. They have to make a special meeting or a special inspection to go out there and take a look at that, because it's different than what the standard spacings are on the screws for their, for the drywall. So there are a number of different things, and then, and then the, the sciders have to hit the studs. I mean, if they, if they, they don't hit the studs, then, then the siding's not installed properly. So then, for us, it's, it's either we have to stand there and watch them, put it on to make sure that it's installed properly, or we come, can come back and, and do what I call, and what the code calls destructive testing. What we do is we would, we would pull on the siding and, and see if it pulls off, and I don't want to do that, because I don't want to pull somebody's siding off if it's, if it's installed properly, and all of a sudden, it's, it's not fastened proper, fastened all the way, and then they have to come back and fix it. So I, I don't want to do that, but I, you know, that's gonna probably be one of our options if we continue to go with the, with the foam board, so.
From a, from a structural standpoint, does vinyl siding provide strength to the wall structure?
No, does not. I mean, it, it, it's held on with the nails, and if the nails are, are fastened into the studs, then it'll stay on there just fine, just like Mr. Retsch had said. It, it works. It's just, we have so many sciders out there that do not take the time to do the quality work that they need to do. It's, it's throw it on fast and get it done, go on to the next job. We have to do our job to make sure that it's done properly, and to do it properly, do our job properly, we, it, it takes time, and it's gonna cost either the city money or it's gonna cost the, the builder money if we happen to, you know, destroy some of the siding.
One last question that I have. Do you have any sense of the frequency where a, the diagonal crossmember piece isn't installed on the wall that requires remediation by a builder? How many times do you see that?
I don't know that we've ever seen it on, anybody that's had the foam, they've always put that in there. Now, there are different ways of installing it, and, and I have seen some that are suspect of whether they actually meet the code or not, but I don't think I've ever seen one that hasn't had it in there if they had foam on the outside.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? So on this issue of the foam versus the OSB, what are our surrounding communities doing? Say, they're adopting what you're proposing, or what?
Well, I mean, we're recommending that we go forward with it if, if you want to, I, I'm not exactly sure how I will come up with any data, data that says that it doesn't, that it doesn't work, because all the manufacturers are gonna say that as long as it's installed properly, it'll be fine. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure exactly where you want me to go with it, but I mean, I can, I can come up, I can see what the manufacturers are saying, and.
Go ahead.
Gary, I think one factor you could bring up, what's, what's this gentleman is bringing up, at least one item we, you should be able to provide is if you take a standard fourplex or some type of structure, what is at least, update us on what may be the cost differences?
Oh, sure.
I think that's really one of his points. He's feeling done properly, it's structurally sound, and, and that's fine, that's, I understand the concerns there, that a lot of times it may not be, but that's up to the builder.
Yeah.
But at least from a cost standpoint, we can evaluate both of those elements in some way.
So I did, I did do some quick research on a, on a fifteen-hundred, or, yeah, fifteen-hundred square foot house, and I just threw some numbers, and I, I can't say that it's exact, I'd like to go see somebody's material list and, and get it for sure, but just throwing some quick numbers together, I came up with about eight-hundred dollars is what it would cost the builder to, to put on the, the structural sheeting if he's using seven-sixteenths OSB.
Increased.
Sarah?
Can you, we, we do a lot on our comparable communities. Our, our comparable communities that we use, and then Cedar Rapids is in there, is one of them, is a local, how many of them have something what we have or are doing what we're proposing?
Well, I'm quite certain that most jurisdictions in our metro area do not require the structural sheeting if they have foam on the outside, so I, I will say that. As far as what they're doing for inspections and things like that, I don't, that I don't know, but I'm, I'm quite certain that most of them are not.
Could we, before the next reading of this, since this is the first, have what our, kind of like we do when we do some of the other purchases and, or changes, look at what our comparables are requiring?
For sure.
Okay, thanks.
Who else? Okay. We'll vote all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five dash zero seven. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the initial consideration is approved.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash eight, amending chapter one-twenty-six, article two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding plumbing code. This will be the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-08, amending Chapter 126, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Plumbing Code. Discussion. None. Okay, all those in favor of approving the first consideration of ordinance number 25-08, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-09, amending Chapter 126, Article 4 of the Marion Code of Ordinances Regarding Mechanic, the Mechanical Code, and this is the initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-09, amending Chapter 126, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Mechanical Code. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-09, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-10, amending Chapter 126, Article 6 of the Marion Code of Ordinances Regarding Housing Code. This is our initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 25-10, amending Chapter 126, Article 6 of the Marion Code of Ordinances Regarding Housing Code. Discussion. All those in favor of ordinance number 25-10, initial consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-11, amending Chapter 223 of the Marion Code of Ordinances Regarding Nuisance Abatement. That's the initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-11, amending Chapter 223 of the Marion Code of Ordinances Regarding Nuisance Abatement. Discussion. Hey, all those in favor of the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-11, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-12, amending Chapter 247 of the Marion Code of Ordinances Regarding Property Maintenance. Initial consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number 25-12, amending Chapter 247 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Property Maintenance. Discussion. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah. Gary, is this, is the scope of this change solely for, I'll say landlords?
The housing code, well, it, the housing code references the property maintenance code, so it's it's the part with the driveways and the sidewalks is definitely directed toward the housing part of it. The landlords and the and the tenants, a lot of times have disputes as to who's cleaning the snow and how getting, how soon it's getting done. So all these items would be in the in the housing code, because it references the property maintenance code.
Okay, I, so what I guess I was maybe trying to clarify, I, as a homeowner, this obligates me to clear the non-public portions of my driveway?
No, it does not.
Okay, I'm, I was just trying to.
It would in a, it would in a housing, in a rental housing situation, but it will not. You, as a homeowner, if you don't want to scoop your sidewalks and your driveways other than what's in the right of way, you, so be it. You don't have to.
Well, my, okay, the, now, I am very diligent in doing that. However, I did have a neighbor at one point who I I kind of asked him, I said, well, you never clear your driveway. He says, I have four-wheel drive.
There's that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number 25-12, initial consideration, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. This brings us to the second public forum this evening, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. If anyone's here to address counsel, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting. Proceed to council comments. Mr. Jensen?
Just a reminder, April 26, 9 to noon, City Showcase, Health Kids Day, Marion, Y, Bree.
First, I just want to thank the mayor for coming out to Skogman Realty this past week and giving our office meeting a little, a little mini state of the city address, so everyone after you left were just so happy that you were there and found it very interesting, and thank you so much for doing that, and then I also want to wish my mother a happy birthday today.
Oh, happy birthday. No. Well, yeah, often every year after the state of the city, I do at least one or two, or maybe sometimes more condensed state-of-the-city presentations to various groups around the region. And it was, thanks for the invite, you know, it was, it really was a very receptive audience. They were very excited. And I think realtors naturally have an interest in hearing about the progress of Marion and what, you know, us giving them a community they can sell, and they can, you know, promote to to potential residents and and businesses who are looking for a place to land. And so it's never hard for me to talk about Marion, so it's hard to know how to condense it enough to into the the half hour that we had, but or but anyway, I do appreciate it. Like, the response from the region has been really tremendous to the state of the city. It's a good, it's always a good sign when people say to me, I wasn't there, but others told me about it. So people are out there talking about it, generating excitement about what they heard and all the great great news and the great progress Marion's making. Again, I have the privilege of telling the story and figuring out how to put it into a story that keeps everyone engaged, but the materials is there, and it's what, all the work that we're all doing, and it's all the great progress that we're making as a community. It it really, you know, was a time for reflection for me, you know, because of the 10 years. And if there's one thing that I'm really, really proud of in this 10 years, there's so many things I'm proud of. We've come a long ways as a community, but it's it's really the change in the attitude and the change and the change in the level of excellence that we have risen to as a, as an organization, as a city organization, as in the city, as the city in general, to where we expect the best and want the best for our community. And that the the idea of, you know, we get one chance to do it the right way, and that we should put the extra effort into achieving the desired result, and and that success is found in that extra extra effort where everyone else thinks they've done enough. And so I'm really proud of what everyone's doing, and let's continue reaching higher. We're adjourned.